Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Calhoun.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Crapp.
Here.
McGarry.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
Yor.
Here.
Moving on to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. I don't have anything listed, but I do have a few things. Are there anybody else? I'll ask the commission first if they have any announcements, acknowledgements, or reports. Okay, my first one is from the rail safety of CN. Dear Mayor Laura Craft, we would like to extend our sincere appreciation to you and your community for officially proclaiming C-Track's Think Train Week in 2024 and recognizing its significance. We're pleased to enclose a rail safety ambassador certificate to acknowledge your commitment. We hope that you will display it proudly. At CN, safety is a core value, and it is only by working together that we will be able to achieve our ambition by eliminating accidents and incidents in the communities across North America where we live, work, and play. We are truly grateful for your support and look forward to continuing our partnership in 2025 and beyond. And then it goes on to say for additional information, and wishing us a happy new year. But it also gave us this rail safety ambassador certificate presented to Mount Clemens for outstanding leadership and support in promoting the importance of rail safety in your community. Congratulations for your commitment to rail safety. So we'll go ahead and put it up in City Hall. And then we have just something we want to share anecdotally from one of our DPW employees. I received this via email. On Saturday, February 8th, at approximately 8:30 PM, DPW employee Josh Houston was out cleaning up the snow that had accumulated on the roads. While driving down Eldridge Street, he noticed a gentleman laying in his front yard. Josh backed his truck up and went to see if the resident was okay and found that he was suffering from hip pain and could not get up and walk. Josh called 911 and stayed with the resident until EMS arrived and assisted. So we want to thank Josh Houston for going above and beyond. We did offer to do a nice certificate and have him into the commission meeting, and he politely declined. So we're still gonna thank him anyway, and we really appreciate it. Okay, and lastly, we want to acknowledge a really special, he was not a resident, but a person in our community, a business owner in our community. So the city of Mount Clemens is pleased to honor Dr. Gladstone Anthony Payton for 57 years of medical practice in Mount Clemens. Dr. Payton immigrated from Jamaica to the United States at the age of 22. He began his long medical career as an intern at Mount Clemens General Hospital, which is now McLaren-McComb. Dr. Payton served in the Navy as a physician for 22 years before retiring as a captain. He was a commanding officer of the Naval Hospital Pax River and Great Lakes Branch Clinic. For 57 years, Dr. Payton treated 200 to 300 patients on a weekly basis within the city limits. During his medical career in Mount Clemens, he delivered thousands of babies. It was his standing practice to display each baby's picture on the walls of his office. Many returning patients were surprised to see their very own photo still on Dr. Payton's walls. It is our pleasure to honor the long and outstanding medical career of Dr. Gladstone Payton and to thank him for his many years of practice in our community. Signed, Mayor Laura Craft. So we'll make sure that Dr. Payton receives his big hit, and he also celebrated his 98th birthday.
No.
No? Are you sure?
Pretty sure.
That's what somebody?
Pretty sure. He's been my doctor for 40 years. No, he's not 98.
Well, good to hear that he's not 98. Well, somebody reported that to my office, but okay, well, good. Good that he'll-
Maybe 89.
All right, we'll go with that. Maybe there was a dyslexic moment.
What a blessing.
All right, so moving on to, are there any further announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports? We'll move on to adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Any questions or comments on the agenda? Call the rule, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
McGarry?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Yor?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Good. Motion passes. All right, we'll move on to public participation. This is the portion of the meeting where we invite all of the public to come to the microphone, address the commission, and we ask that you give us your full name, residential address, and abide by our three-minute rule. If you would like to address the commission, come on up. All right, seeing none, then we will go ahead and move on to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during the previous meeting. Mr. Shipman.
At the February 3rd, 2025 commission meeting during public comment, the following question was asked. Does the city have any intention of acquiring any of the River Hills condominium properties for future development purposes? The answer is no. The city has no plans to purchase any of the River Hills condominium properties.
Anybody have any questions, or Mr. Shipman?
I do. Is there any word on, I think it's only been a couple of weeks, any word on improvement with the post office?
I actually made contact with the post office, I believe it was Tuesday, and she was going to meet with the union, I believe it was on Wednesday, to try to work something out with the parking, so I haven't heard anything since then.
Thanks for staying in touch with them.
Yeah, so again, we'll reach out this week. I believe it was Clarence that was here, was that his name? I was hoping he was here tonight, and I was gonna ask him if they had that meeting, but I don't see him, so.
But we'll keep on top of it. All right, any other questions or comments? We'll move to approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Questions or comments about the minutes? Call the rule, please.
Fournier?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
McGarry?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Yor?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Moving to general business, 9A, approval of VBJG Mount Clemens LLC Pleasant Trees Marijuana Designated Consumption Establishment, conditional permit extension. I entertain a motion.
I move to approve an additional one-year extension to VBJG Mount Clemens LLC Pleasant Trees for a conditional marijuana designated consumption establishment permit, which will expire on March 6th, 2026.
Support. Okay, Mr. Shipman?
On January 3rd, 2024, the Mount Clemens City Commission granted a one-year extension to VBJG Mount Clemens LLC Doing Business as Pleasant Trees for a conditional marijuana designated consumption establishment permit, which will expire on March 6th, 2025. Pleasant Trees is now asking for a second extension due to recent changes to the cannabis regulatory agency's rules and regulations, which will not become effective until late 2025. Pleasant Trees has delayed opening a marijuana designated consumption establishment on their premises until these new operating rules are in effect, and accordingly are requesting that their conditional permit be granted an additional one-year extension.
Okay, anyone have any questions or comments?
Is there any limit to how many extensions they can ask?
I don't believe so, no, as long as you're willing to approve it.
It just doesn't stop anyone because they already have a marijuana retail store there, so it's not stopping anyone within so many feet of something else to open anything, so just an expansion really of what they already have.
It's a lounge, right?
Right.
We don't have any other lounges in town.
We don't.
I think so.
Did we give any other permits? I thought there was another permit for one.
Not for lounge.
Not for lounge. I remember Pleasant Trees was the only one.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I generally am just, I'd rather see them take the time to open in accordance with the new rules once they hit, instead of like, open, close, adjust the new rules, open again. It seems just practical to just give them another year, wait for the-
To do it right.
Wheels of government to turn slowly, spit out the new rules.
I don't think it harms anything, so.
That's what I mean, it's not affecting-
Right, exactly. Okay, all right, well, anybody else? We're pretty good. All right, call the rule, please.
Crapp?
Yes.
McGarry?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Yor?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. 9B, purchases and payments.
Move to approve purchases and payments of invoices as presented.
Support.
Mr. Shipman, I know there's not a cover letter, so does anybody have any questions or comments for- about purchases and payments? Call the rule, please.
McGarry?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Yor?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes. Okay, we will move to consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Call the rule, please.
Rick?
Yes.
Yor?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
McGarry?
Yes.
Okay, moving to city manager's report, Mr. Shipman.
The city's strategic plan calls for having a focused code enforcement strategy to reduce the number of vacant structures. As part of these efforts, a new report will be provided on a quarterly basis showing both commercial and residential vacant structures. We'd like to thank Becky Phillips for her service and dedication to the City Department of Public Works. Becky has retired from the DPW after over 24 years of service to the city and its residents. Congratulations to Haley Dumas, who was promoted from the treasurer's office to fill Becky's position. Interviews to fill the vacant position in the treasurer's office were conducted last week. Refuse pickup will run on schedule throughout the month of February. And to facilitate the spring cleanup, our waste removal contractor will begin picking up yard refuse on March 23rd. Please do one of the following three things to eliminate yard waste. Number one, compost your yard waste at home. Two, place all compost at the curb in a 32-gallon or smaller refuse container marked compost or yard waste. These containers will not be emptied if they contain anything other than yard waste. Or three, place yard waste in a large 30-gallon brown paper bags. And it's nice to be talking about yard waste cleanup with the weather like it's been, I will tell you.
Oh, it's not much snow.
Join Mount Clemens Recreation for beginner and intermediate line dancing classes beginning March 26. Don't forget about the superheroes and sweethearts, mother-son dance on March 29. For more information or to register, contact Mount Clemens Recreation at 586-469-6800, extension 520. The last day to pay 2024 property tax is Friday, February 28. On March 1st, any remaining balances will be transferred to the McComb County Treasurer, and payment must be remitted to them. Candidate packets for the city's November 4th, 2025 election will be available in the city clerk's office on Monday, March 3rd. Races for this election include the office of mayor for one two-year term and three four-year city commission terms. To qualify as a candidate, you must be at least 18 years of age, a registered voter, a resident of the city for at least 365 days immediately prior to the last day of filing for the office. The deadline for application materials is Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025 at 4:00 PM in the Mount Clemens City Clerk's office. The city has submitted a RAP 2.0 revitalization and placemaking grant for the downtown revitalization project. The total project cost is $1,130,000. We've applied for a $565,000 grant with a $565,000 match.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Shipman?
I'd just like to again thank you for always answering my weird off-the-wall questions via email. I appreciate it.
You know what, I don't think they're weird or off-the-wall, but you don't know some-
I'll bring a list next time.
If I could, Mayor, I'd like to just read something else, and it's something that Jeff Wood put together for me.
Sure.
And I was gonna, I think it's good to read like it is, Jeff, so I'm gonna read it just like that. I didn't have time today to condense it a little bit, so. You know, I know everybody probably understands that the city of Mount Clemens never sleeps, right? I mean, there's always a department, whether it's police and fire, you know, during situations like the snow we've had this week. You know, the things that are going on and that our employees are doing, and these are employees that work a normal 40-hour schedule, right? And then get asked to go above and beyond. So this last week, with the three different snowfalls that we encountered, so I'm gonna read this right as Jeff wrote, "Since the snow started on Wednesday, February 12th, 2025, at approximately 3:00 PM through Monday, February 17th, 2025, at 9:00 AM, the DPS had accumulated 518 man-hours dedicated to just snow and ice removal. To put some of that in perspective, there was staff that worked their regular 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM shift on Wednesday, February 12th, then began plowing snow at 4:00 PM and worked through until 3:00 PM on Thursday, February 13th, and then returning at 3:00 AM Friday, February 14th, clean up the downtown and worked until 3:00 PM Friday. On Saturday, February 15th, they began again at 5:00 AM and worked until 8:00 AM, and then again at 10:00 AM and worked until 10:00 PM. On Sunday, February 16th, they began at 5:00 AM and worked until 11:00 PM, and returned on Monday, February 17th, cleaned up the downtown at 3:00 AM through 9:00 AM. They also had to deal with breakdowns of equipment. One of the plow and saw trucks radiator started leaking, it was taken out of service completely. Another plow saw truck started overheating, and the thermostat was removed to keep it operational through the storm as a temporary fix. One of the pickup plow electric hydraulic motors became inoperable and was taken out of service. A hydraulic cylinder on the tractor used for sidewalks downtown broke, so a cylinder from a different piece of equipment was borrowed as a temporary fix, so we continued to plow the snow. And then the mechanics that had to fix that will also plow snow, but they can't plow snow when they're fixing the equipment. And so while all this was going on, we ended up with two water main breaks. Of course, right in the middle of the heavy snowstorm, so then the water sewer department was out on Saturday fixing that. And then God only knows how many calls the fire department and the police department took during that, so. When they say the city never sleeps, no city ever sleeps. So I just wanted everybody to know what, you know, challenges we face during these times and hope everybody would be patient. Because I believe on a standard snow, when the snow quits, it takes about 14 hours to completely plow all the streets in Mount Clemens, so. Just understand that we're trying.
And when we had back-to-back snowfalls, then you didn't get to finish the first 14 hours.
No, that's what I'm saying, and then it's not, there's no fresh people coming, and it was the same people, and then this, I know this last weekend, because of some vacation time and some funeral leave, we were actually down about three people to begin with, so. Can't predict when it's gonna snow.
Thank you for giving that perspective to everybody, us, but also the residents and everybody who's watching, because I think it's helpful to understand how things happen and why they happen, and you know, that maybe that's the reason why your snow isn't plowed immediately. But we thank you, and Jeff-
I also want to mention, sorry-
Go ahead, please.
As you're talking about this, I'm thinking how all these people have personalized families. Maybe kids who aren't in school, that they expected to be in school, you know, things that aren't going the way they planned because of the weather, and yet they're needed to go above and beyond to keep all of us safe, so it's really, it's heartwarming. Thank you for sharing that.
And Jeff, please pass on our thanks. It's okay. Please pass on our thanks to all of, everyone at DPW, but especially, especially all those drivers. Okay, Chicken Shack will do it, that's great. Awesome. All right, moving to our second opportunity where we invite the public to address the commission. Again, all that we ask is that you come to the microphone, give us your first full name and your residential address, and you abide by our two-minute rule. If there's anyone who would like to address the commission at this time, you're more than welcome to come to the microphone. All right, seeing none, we will move to commissioner comments, and we will start with Commissioner Rick this time.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank the mayor for going to advocate for the city and the region out in DC. I'm sure it was super fun. But thank you for representing our region and getting our interests into the ears that need to hear it. Thank you so much for explaining the struggles of the staff and the work that they do. Please continue to let us know what they're going through and telling their story. They don't, you guys don't get the appreciation you deserve, and we don't even know what appreciation you deserve half the time. Tell your stories, tell your people's stories, please. Thank you to Josh for probably saving that resident's life. Thank you Becky for her 24 years of service. Congrats to Haley on her promotion and best of luck in her new role. Thank you Captain Payton for your decades of service in the Navy and to the people of Mount Clemens. Thank you Kathleen for continuing to serve on the beautification committee. Thank you Megan and Jen for stepping up to serve on the DDA. If anybody's interested in serving on any boards, committees, or commissions, contact the city, and if you're interested in serving on this commission, get your packet, put your name in the hat, give it a try. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Calhoun.
Well, I want to thank everyone for coming out on what was an extremely cold day. Commissioner McGarry, the last meeting, put together some very interesting information about folks in Mount Clemens, African-Americans who've made an impact, who unfortunately have passed away. And she helped me put together some great information about some folks who are still with us, who have made an impact and who continue to make an impact every day. So here are three of them. Diana Cobb, Diana was a military child, and she moved often. She was born in 1958, and she experienced living in Germany and Turkey. She was in first grade, where she experienced integrated schooling in Bollocksy Schools. The New York Times interviewed her as to that situation. She's been a resident of Mount Clemens since 1967, where she raised her son in the Mount Clemens School System. She's also a fantastic active member of the River Acres Community Group, and so I know there are a number of members here who keep an eye on the neighborhood and who make sure that the commission and that their neighbors are aware of what's going on. So I want to thank Diana for the difference that she's made in our community, and there's so much more I didn't even get to mention here. Rhonda Powell, Rhonda was the first African-American director hired by McComb County, and she worked, she led McComb Community Action. And so she's another person who's continuing to make a difference in our community. And Sarah Stovall is another one. Sarah's here, actually, so. There you are, please stand, thank you. So she gave me some information I didn't even know too, so this is really interesting. Ms. Stovall was the first black sales clerk at SS Kreske's in Mount Clemens. She was the first president of the McComb County Chapter in the city of Mount Clemens for the National Council of Negro Women, which was founded in 1935. Now, she also started a major drill team here in Mount Clemens. This team was requested all over the county for parades and even won some prestigious awards. She worked with McLaren-McComb on their diversity programs. She was on the advisory board of the NAACP. She was a youth advisor for the NAACP and hosted numerous events for students in our community. So that's just three people who have made a huge impact in our community, and I want to thank you all. Black history is extremely important. I think, to me, in this country, diversity is really our strength, and I think there are some people at the highest levels of power who feel differently, and it's extremely disappointing. Here in our community, it's a real melting pot, people of, who come from all over the country. They choose to live in Mount Clemens, they were born here, some people moved here, and look at our city. We all get along. We all solve problems together, we're fighters, and we fight for each other, and that's what I loved about this community. That's why I chose to stay here. That's the strength that we have, and so I just want to encourage everyone who's here to continue to fight for what you believe in, but diversity is our strength, and that's the message that I want to leave us with this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dempsey?
Very nice message.
Yeah.
I want to also thank the employees of the city, all of the employees. It's difficult during these times, especially the snow, and you know, I've always said, if you come in from the north, you come in from the west, you hit Mount Clemens, you know, right away. You go through all those other communities and you struggle to get here, you hit Mount Clemens, the streets are perfect, you know? So if your street didn't get done the first, you know, eight hours or something, it did get done. Eventually, it will get done in every street. And I do appreciate that, I appreciate the water department has to deal with this cold weather, the fire department. I don't think people realize, those are all very difficult, stressful jobs, and so I absolutely appreciate what they're doing. Congratulations to Becky, I've known her for so many years, so I'm happy that she's retiring, and I hope she has a wonderful retirement. I also want to, I was hoping Dr. Payton would show up, but I kind of knew he wouldn't. He doesn't like accolades, he doesn't like to be in the limelight, those of you who know him. I've known him for so many years, I tried to talk him out of it, said, "You can't retire, where are we gonna go?" You know? He's the only doctor around that you had no appointment, you just came in. And sometimes you had to wait a couple hours, but you were seen that day, so how many times you get sick and you have to wait a week before you can get into your doctor?
That's true.
You'd walked in the same day and you could see him. So he's taken care of me a long time, and I am truly gonna miss him, and I think he's gonna miss it terribly. I think he had a very difficult time making this decision. His family, I think, wanted him to, and I think that he leaves quite a legacy for the Mount Clemens residents. So congratulations, Dr. Payton, on your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier?
Well, the side of the room really eloquently thanked everyone.
I know.
We're happy that you started here.
I totally and absolutely agree with everything that they've said, and thanks to all, thanks to the employees. But I also want to thank the residents, who, you know, when you have these back-to-back snows and there's you know, shoveling and keeping up with all of it is tough, and, but it also brings out the best in everybody. I watched in my neighborhood, you know, the person next door to me, he was doing my front sidewalk, and you know, then I've got the snow blower going down the street, we talked to each other, we got out, but everybody in our area got done one way or the other by the neighbors that were there.
And so that's a beautiful thing to see, and also thanks to everyone who took their cars off the street and enabled our plowers, because it's, anyone who does a driveway with a snow blower knows it's a lot easier to do an empty driveway than try to get around the car that's there. So thanks to all who absolutely took their cars off the street or found a place to put them. I know it's not always easy. My driveway's available if someone needs one, and, but you know, that helps too. And so thanks to all the residents who cleaned up right along with the city and got it done. Very much.
Thank you. Commissioner McGarry?
I want to start by thanking your city manager for giving us that insight, because I did receive a few calls from residents, understanding, you know, about the snow and the lateness of pushing. But after hearing that- Because I did receive a few calls from residents, understanding, you know, about the snow and the lateness of pushing, but after hearing that. It's reality, so I appreciate, uh, like Commissioner Rick said, continue to give us those scenarios to open our eyes up a little bit, and so. We do appreciate our workers in the city with all that breakdown and overworking and so forth and so on, Mount Clemens looked very well. And is very much appreciative downtown and the regular residential areas, thank you. Um, I did wanna share some resources with our community online and here in person. Um, if you grossed sixty-seven thousand or less, free tax preparation is available. Um, we, you can do it as a walk-in, you can drop off your um, documents and um, have them picked up. And my biggest thing is people who pay a gas bill that make sixty-seven thousand or less. And you only get social security, don't feel that you don't have to do taxes, you get a home heating tax credit. You can get almost three months of a gas credit on your bill due to your income. And you just need your consumer energy bill and some other documents, so feel free to call. Um, Macomb Community Action at five eight six four six nine six nine six four for details. Right now, walk-ins on Saturdays from nine to three and Tuesdays and Thursdays as well, but call for any extra details for yourself. Or for someone that you know. Water bill assistance is still available in Mount Clemens with the same contact telephone number. Thank you so much for sending Mount Clemens your neighbors to get help for paying that water bill. Up to three thousand dollars is the maximum that can be paid on your water bill by calling Macomb Community Action. And then the first Friday of March, I'll be at Karen's Center, um. At eleven o'clock in the morning for any needs, resources that you may uh, need. Um, I'll also be preparing your home heating tax credit if needed, or if you have any questions regarding um, your DHS application. Just any questions in general, if I cannot help you, I will make sure I get a resource of information for you to receive assistance. Also, if you are a senior in Mount Clemens, utilize offices of senior services, they have phenomenal services. Just give them a call and ask what they have, their not contact number is five eight six four six nine five two two eight. So you can give them a call for what resources you might could use as a senior. And so I, I wanna um, end with these twelve pages, no, I'm just teasing. Um, I wanted to share also, being that this is Black History Month, I wanted to share, as stated. Those who are here and we can celebrate, it's mind boggling when you really think about it, for those of us that had history in school. Now we can talk about a little history in our own city, and they're still here, that's, I love that. So, United Memorial Funeral Home, it's the first African American funeral home in Macomb County, it started with Bobby Hill. James Fishback, Irene and Harold Henry, the funeral home was located on South Main Street, they later moved. To open their current residence on Dickerson Street, right here in Mount Clemens where they are standing. For those that didn't know, and then um, I wanna talk about a young lady who is present here today. If you don't mind standing, Marva Thompson while I read just a little bit about you. Marva Thompson is the first African American kindergarten teacher in the Mount Clemens School District. She had a little under twenty students, she's from Plant City, Florida. The school was at the corner of Welch Street and Jones Street in Mount Clemens, there is a school still sitting there. That's where she began, um, it was Lincoln Elementary, Elementary School. Ruth Myers, as she can remember, was the principal at that time, well, at, coming from Plant City, Florida. She resided at thirty-two Gibb Street, which was right across the bridge there, a little more than forty years. Where she also was our minister's wife for a little more than fifty years, same wife, same church. So, she and along, along with Martha Sims, who was also the first African American teacher at Edison School in Mount Clemens, which is across the bridge. Located on the same side of town as our city hall, um. Marva Thompson and Martha Sims and Georgia Parker used to be in a car together, going back and forth to college. While teaching here in Mount Clemens to complete their education, riding to school together. You can find Marva Thompson still occasionally teaching the younger students at the Church of Christ in Mount Clemens, which she enjoys speaking. Even now at a national level, Marva Thompson, it is an honor to have you here. As a black historian here from a resident in Mount Clemens, we thank you, is there anything you wanted to say?
I would like to say to the mayor and to the board, it's such an honor to be here. At the age of eighty-three years old, I am, and Mrs. Dempsey Bob, I refer to her, we go way back. My husband was very active here in the city, and Mount Clemens on many boards and everything, but it's such an honor. To sit here and to see the progress that Mount Clemens has made, we came here in nineteen sixty-seven. So see how Mount Clemens has grown, it's such an honor. We so proud of you, Tracy, we call her Teresa, I mean, call her Tracy, but her name is Teresa. We're so proud of her as well as Spencer, you know, because back in sixty-seven and longer, we didn't see faces like them. But thank to you as board members for having the heart of gold to see the diversity that is so well needed. I wanna look over and thank the people who so many times are forgotten. Who take care of our cities, our states, our countries, all of the work that they put in. And nothing usually sad, so I wanna say thanks to you, you are perfect. An example, what true men are, really are. To put your energy, to put your families even on the back burner, to take care of us as citizens, so again, thank you. I can go on and on and on, but it is such an honor to be here, and Teresa, we are so super proud of you. Of all of the work that she does, she not only works here with you all, but she's a very active member in our church at the North Broadway. And not only in our church, I don't live in Mount Clemens anymore, I live in Chesterfield now, and I usually see Bob quite often, cause she and I usually go to the same place. But the point to be made is, and I will take my seat, cause most of you, not most of you, but a lot of you back here. Know that I love to share and everything, so again, I want to say, I first thank God. From the opportunity that I've had coming all the way from the south, when there was no integration when I was in school. The first teacher that I had that didn't look like me was at Eastern Michigan University. When I went to school there to get my masters, that's when Mrs. Sims and I drove, and it was for quite a few other teachers too that. We drove to Ypsilanti just to get our masters, cause we had our BS and BA degrees when we got here. But it was from all of our universities there, uh, black universities there in the south, but to see the growth, uh, even a country. But all I'm saying is to sit and see who's among you and all is to know. What an impact you have on people's lives, you never know who you're touching, you never know. And when each one of you are sitting in those seats, it's not by accident, that's right, it was God's ordained purpose. For you to be in the position where you are now, given you an opportunity. They said, what are you gonna do with your knowledge and your abilities and your strength that you have for the people around you? So again, to the board and to the mayor and to the man that is sitting over, and also to the community people. Thanks again for this opportunity, I feel so humble and I feel so blessed at the age of eighty-three years old. Still able to go and serve, so again, Teresa, thank you for this opportunity for inviting me to come. And to give it my time, a little time to share with you, again, Sarah is also a member of our congregation. Which is a very active lady in the city, Sarah comes back and gives us a lot of information. So we're well versed with the information about the city because of Sarah and Teresa. Again, thank you all for giving me this opportunity, thank you.
Are you really gonna make me go next?
I know.
We love that you shared, thank you for doing that, um. Everything all the other commissioners have said before me, I echo what they say, all the thanks, I especially appreciate. The information that Commissioner Calhoun and Commissioner McGarrettie brought forward. Um, having lived um, in Mount Clemens my whole life and gone to school here, I recognize many names and I'm friends with some of. The people they mentioned, so it's just great to celebrate them, I really appreciate that. And I wanna thank all of you for being in the audience, it's so much different to have a meeting with people in the audience and, you know, with as. Challenging as the weather can be, all of you made that effort and I, it doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you. And coming to the microphone and sharing some of your thoughts today was just so uplifting. Uh, and I do encourage you to check on your neighbors, make sure people are okay during this weather, I know. Commissioner McGarrettie always is willing to connect people to resources and shares them widely, so don't be afraid to ask, um. I, I work in healthcare, we know that during this time of the year especially, people experience a lot of loneliness. So bring them to the city commission meeting with you, it's not lonely here. Um, but really check on, check on your friends and neighbors, it's so important right now. And I'm just gonna take a minute to speak about the Mount Clemens Community Schools and the um, bond issue that's up for election in May. Well, I hear a lot of questions, a lot of talk, I have a lot of questions, my plea to all of you is to find out when the next meetings are, town halls, whatever they might call them. Attend them, ask questions, um, sometimes people aren't gonna. Offer information unless you ask the question, and if you have a question, I guarantee twenty other people have the same question. Um, so please get informed so that you can help inform others, um, and get the right information. And just like it's important to come to these city meetings so that you're aware. Myself included, I'm, I'm really challenging myself to attend more school board meetings, and I ask all of you to consider that because that is. That is who the school board reports to, is us, the community, and so it's up to us to hold them accountable, um. So that's my little plea for tonight, uh, that's it.
Alright, I'll give you the mulligan.
I bet we're thinking.
Do you both have one more thing?
So we can, we, she can um, help me, but as this is Black History Month, and as we are recognizing so many great people. From our black community in the city, we would be amiss if we didn't recognize Roger Button. Yes, Roger Button sat on this commission for a long time, I don't remember how many years.
I think at least eight.
Yes.
For me, he was like a mentor, I, I could go to him and talk to him about anything. And he always gave me very wise advice, and I know he did a lot of things in this community and, and continues to do so. But he is a, a great man, and I, I certainly wouldn't want to. I wanna take this opportunity to recognize him, Barb, if you have anything.
I, I was gonna say something after Jill got done, saying, um, that yes, Roger was just, he was just wonderful to be on the board. He represented the community one hundred percent, and um, we miss him, I know I miss him, I still talk to him, but I still miss him. You know, he was a epitome of a good civil servant, he really listened.
Absolutely.
I know he touched a lot of children's lives with his coaching and with his teaching and so.
Just a great person all around.
Definitely, and he's still, he's on the alive list. Yeah, let's clarify that. Cause I think he said, we said he was. Alright, um, yeah, to follow up on all of that, um, uh, I would like to thank um. The organization SEMCOG for giving me um, the opportunity to represent Macomb County, but most importantly, obviously, Mount Clemens. Um, in their annual trip to um, DC, I was able to attend a lot of different congressional meetings and um, with our, both of our senators. And um, was proud to be able to bring some of the issues that Mount Clemens and Macomb County face, uh, and give kind of a face to the problems. Um, and uh, and, and I was really just proud to be in the room with, um, and make sure that Mount Clemens was represented. And our name was brought to that forefront, so they know, um, we're, we're hoping to bring good things back to Mount Clemens. Um, I get, received an invitation to um, the governor's state of the state address, uh, from representative, state representative, uh, Denise Spencer. Um, so I will sit on the floor of the um, of the house and um, be. Uh, able to witness the state of the state address next Wednesday, um, it is pretty much past my bedtime at that point, but I'm gonna. Have a cup of coffee and stay up for uh, for that address, but I'm excited to um, again, represent Mount Clemens. Um, with, along with State Representative Denise Spencer, it's a huge honor for her to extend that invitation to me, so. Um, I will have coffee talks on Tuesday, March eleventh at nine thirty in the morning at John's Family Grill. And then I, again, Thursday, uh, March thirteenth at six thirty PM, um, at Black Cat Coffee. So, uh, of course, those are opportunities to come and have casual conversation, hear about what are, what's going on in Mount Clemens. And um, answer questions for, you know, from you, um, in kind of a real easygoing setting, so hopefully, um. If you have questions or you just wanna hear about what's going on, you'll join me on either one of those dates. Um, I'd like to thank the two people, um, who stepped up, especially, um. Our newcomers to our Downtown Development Authority Board, uh, Megan from Artist Music and Jen from um, Chaos Salon. Uh, both women are going to take time away from their business and their families, um, to, to serve on the Downtown Development Board and. The Downtown Development Board is um, what I would consider a heavier commitment, um, because it's not just one meeting. It, it's definitely, um, there's more to it than that, and so I wanna thank them for making that sacrifice and um, stepping up to volunteer to be on that board. Um, the DPW, I mean, I know that, that was a, it's a huge commitment, um. To, to, to put your, even just to put your body through that type of working for that long um, of hours, and so. Um, I wanna again thank them because I know that's, that's a lot of stress and a lot of, um, a lot of work, so. Um, so thank you to all of, for their commit, for their commitment to the citizens to keep us safe, um, so I appreciate that. And um, I, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Any questions or comments, all those in favor? Any opposed, alright, see everyone next meeting, thanks, have a great night.